Welcome to the Thursday, May 8th, 2014, regular meeting of the school committee. At this time, we'd ask that you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Look at how many photos I have.
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Thank you, every seat. At this time, we'd ask that we observe a moment of silence for our troops serving overseas. Thank you and good evening. We're gonna take things out of order. Good evening, school committee and Mr. Mayor. How is everyone this evening?
Hey, how we doing?
Fantastic. We're thrilled to have so many parents and students here today, some of whom will be performing for us. We're gonna take things out of order a little bit to make sure that we get things done in a timely fashion. First, I'd like to recognize the Frost Middle School, in particular, the school newspaper called The Frost Flash has been nationally recognized by the American Scholastic Press Association with a second-place win in their 2013-2014 annual newspaper review and contest for intermediate middle schools of 500 to 1,000 kids. This is a huge honor for the middle school newspaper student staff. The Frost Flash Newspaper Club, which operates with help from advisors Matt DeBrock and John Patterson, and is funded by the Joey Forney Services Second Step Foundation. We wanted to send additional kudos to Diana Echeverry, who's been instrumental in the printing of the newspaper three to four times a year. She also has left us with a professional-looking document, one which we are proud to share with the student body of the entire school. We do have a plaque for them, and I'm hoping that the Frost Flash folks can come up and receive this certificate from the school committee. All right, thank you. This time, we'd like to call up the leadership of this complex. Marissa Boasian runs our elementary school here. Kevin Kozelbach runs Spark Academy. And Alice Merlino runs the middle school. The committee made a great idea last time to have the principals come up and talk to you guys briefly, and so that is what they're gonna do, and maybe take a question or two.
I first want to welcome and thank everyone for coming. The school committee, Mayor Rivera, Superintendent Riley, and all the administrative team of the Lawrence Public Schools, and of course, our wonderful students and families. Thank you so much for holding your session here at the South Lawrence East Complex. My name is Kevin Kozelbach. I'm the principal of Spark Academy. And I'm gonna give a very quick description of the three schools that are in this building. This is Marissa Boasian. She is the principal of South Lawrence East Elementary School. And as you, I'm sure you know, South Lawrence East Elementary School is a Level 1 school that has received commendations from the state year after year after year of extreme gains in student performance. So it's been a wonderful school, South Lawrence East Elementary School. My school, again, the school I'm the principal of, is Spark Academy. We are now a fifth and sixth grade school, and we're phasing in to be a 5th through 8th school. We run an extended day for students that's eight hours long. We have five-plus hours of very rigorous academics, but we also have about two hours of movement-oriented specialty classes. Everything from exercise, to stepping, to basketball, to cheerleading. And you'll see a lot of this today up on stage. And this is Alice Merlino. And Alice is doing a fantastic job making sure all of the students in the middle school are learning at extremely high rates. And she's also been a fantastic mentor to me as I come to Lawrence from the Boston Public Schools. So at this point, if anyone has any questions, we could take them. Otherwise, we could have the South Lawrence East Middle School Cheerleaders come up before.
I have a question.
Sure.
So we have Spark Academy, and how's the Spark Academy going? How many students are in the Spark Academy?
Spark Academy has 270 students. Next year, we'll be up to 415 as we absorb the 7th grade.
Just wanted to ask that question.
You mentioned the transition. So can you explain a little bit more how that transition is gonna happen?
Sure. So Spark Academy last year was just a 5th grade school. This year, it's a 5th and 6th grade school, and the next year will be 5th, 6th, and 7th grade. Ms. Merlino and I were completely in conjunction to make sure it's a smooth transition for staff and for students. And so far, it's been a really good, it's been a really good experience, I think, for everyone at the school.
So, how long have you all been educators, if you don't mind me asking?
Do I have to end this?
You can shave off a couple of years.
One time.
This is my 15th. I've actually been here, on all 15 in this building, all 15, as a teacher, coach, and now principal.
And 21 years.
So, I know that it's been an interesting situation here at the South Lawrence East, where we had a Level 1 school and a Level 4 school. Can you explain, just so everyone at home kind of understands what the difference between the two is, and really, why it now is able to change into a positive movement when Spark Academy came in?
I can speak from our end. In the time that I've been here since the inception of our balanced workshop model, we've made a top priority making sure all students are achieving, thinking, demonstrating mastery of all standards, highest levels.
We pass students on. The consistency, I think, from grades 1 to 4, in my experience, has been extremely consistent. And it's grown, that consistency throughout. We have models of coaching, professional development in-house, that we've, you know, we've just grown in success over the years. And that success is now taking hold in the other grade levels beyond the 4th grade. So we started off as one large complex, which turned out, I think, a lot of the discrepancies have been because at one point we were too large. So since we've kind of made less more, we've kind of found a better way to organize the age levels, organize the levels of developmentally. And I think we're definitely starting to show progress in that area with the consistency throughout the buildings.
Thank you.
I just...
Ms. Mariano?
Yes. I just want to thank you in advance for hosting us tonight, and all the children that are here. It's wonderful to see you here, and I know great things are happening here at the South Lawrence East. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up.
Let's go over there, you and I. We'll go.
Ready, one, two, three. Slap, tear!
We'd also like to recognize Caitlin Scarry, who's the coach of the SLE Middle School Cheerleaders. Thank you for all your hard work. This time, I believe the SLE Elementary Chorus, led by Todd Hayden, piano support by Sophia Dees, will be joining us on stage.
While they get set up, I'll tell you, my name is Todd Hayden. Good evening. I'm the director of the music at South Lawrence East Elementary School. We're gonna be just performing two short pieces for you. The first piece, "Yonder Come Day," is based on a traditional Georgia sea island spiritual. And the second piece is called "Build Me a World" by Ginger Littleton, which was adapted by comments made by 6th graders when they were asked what they would like to see in their future. Thank you.
Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul. Yonder, 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 yonder. Sun is arising in my soul. Trees are green and the air is sweet. The good weather's singing underneath my feet. I'm putting my feet, got my feet on line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine, yeah. Trees are green and the air is sweet. Walking that road, my feet. I'm walking that road, my feet on line. Walking that road, I'm feeling fine, yeah. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Yonder come day, oh my soul. Yonder come day, day is a breaking. Sun is arising in my soul.
I want to recognize... Is this on?
Yeah, it's on. Yep.
I want to recognize Ms. Sophia Dees on the piano. She is a wonderful 4th grade teacher at South Lawrence East Elementary, who is volunteering her time to play for us. So thank you for...
Build me a world where there's hope for children to grow with no poverty, no hatred or war. Build me a world where there's room to move in, with wide open scenery and clear skies above. Up climb the mountains and look out over the sea. I'll build the bridges connecting people to me. Build me a world where there's no more sickness. We share all our promises, the rich and the poor. I'll build this world if you stand beside me. Give me hope, give me faith, give me love. Up climb the mountains and look out over the sea. I'll build the bridges connecting people to me. Build me a world where there's no more sickness. We share all our promises, the rich and the poor. I'll build this world if you stand beside me. Give me hope, give me faith, give me love.
We have one final performance tonight. It's my pleasure to welcome the Spark Academy steppers, led by Crystalin Guzman, Sherman Cowan, and Juan Maldonado. Lizzie, how you doing? Are we in your way?
You have enough space?
Lizzie, this is the mayor introducing.
How you doing? You're a charge. A whole way to go!
All right, Natalie, we're watching.
Y'all be on me.
Y'all be on me.
I watch your back to see.
You watch your back to see.
It does one way.
It does one way.
What kind of stuff you be?
Straight, straight, straight.
Now you make it.
Now you make it.
Now we're pulling it for life.
That's it for life.
Now we're pulling it for...
Pulling it for life.
Now we're pulling it for...
We be my freedom.
Woo! Take that bird!
Yeah!
Take that bird!
Yeah!
Top of the little blue sky, only got it. Slow it down now.
Slow.
Slow. Slow. Speed it up! D. Spark. Stoppers, turn, hop! Left, hey!
At this time, we'd also like to welcome up the SES Pride Basketball Team. The team was created six years ago to serve as an incentive for student achievement, both academic and behaviorally. The team plays in the Greater Boston Basketball League against teams from the Merrimack Valley and the Greater Boston area. Teams like Cambridge, Charlestown, Arlington, Lynn, Somerville, and Methuen. They won two championships in the past five seasons. This year, the SES Pride Basketball Team won the East Division Championship, defeating Farr Academy of Cambridge, Mass. in quadruple overtime. Fifty-four to fifty-three. Are Craig and Lewis here with the team to present the... Please come see the mayor. Congratulations. There you go.
You doing? It's not fast, okay? I'll go for that one, I said.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you, and best, guys. Quadruple overtime. Congratulations. The school committee has now invited us in. We'll move quickly, I promise, to the update portion from the superintendent. First, I'd like to introduce you to Doug Sullivan, who is our new Director of Pupil Personnel Services. Doug has been a longtime teacher at the Frost Middle School and has been the Vice President of the Lawrence Teachers Union. He'll be coming to help us with special education, among other things. So I didn't know if the committee had any questions, but we certainly wanted to welcome Mr. Sullivan to the administration.
Members, any questions? Mr. Blaschler?
Just one question. What do you see moving forward for achievements that you can do, short-term and long-term, what you're looking for, for ultimate goals?
Goodie, an easy question. I think first steps in terms of the department being without a leader for a while, the administrative team has laid some great foundation for me in terms of streamlining the referral process. We're looking at expanding our ESD services and systemically to look at district-wide push for greater inclusion.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, and I just want to take two seconds because I see the president of Lawrence Teachers Union in the back, Frank McGlaughlin. Thank you for coming tonight. Always a good sight. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. This time, we'd ask Mr. Bhutan to come up to discuss the Working Cities Challenge Grant and Family Engagement. Nelson, are you here? As this committee remembers, we were recently awarded by the Boston Fed a large grant to get our family welcome center off the ground. We actually got the highest award of any of the gateway cities that applied. And Nelson, I think, is here to talk about some of that work and other things as well.
Good evening, members of the school committee. My name is Nelson Bhutan. Hi, everyone in the public. I am the Director of Community, Family, and Student Engagement for the Lawrence Public Schools. I started officially last year in the month of August, exactly on my birthday.
Happy birthday.
I will never forget. Let me start by sharing a little bit about the Working Cities Challenge Initiative, which is an initiative of the Federal Reserve Bank of Boston. This was an initiative that emerged of a research, of research done by the Feds. And they did it across the country. They looked at a great number of mixed-sized cities, mainly gateway cities like Lawrence. And what they found was that two factors, two very important factors, that helped drive economic development and the success of the families in those cities. And those were cross-sector collaboration and also a shared vision. So they decided to create this initiative and put 1.8 millions in the hands of a number of organizations, or cities, I would say, cities. And Lawrence was awarded $700,000 over three years. We won the biggest prize, I must say. And we are really excited because one of the conditions to even apply, not even win, apply, was to provide a strong evidence of cross-sector collaboration among businesses, nonprofits, and municipal government. About 20 or 27 organizations got together last year. And the whole process actually lasted over almost a year. And they decided to make the Lawrence Public Schools turnaround plan and the Family Resource Center the cornerstone of this plan. From that grant, Lawrence Public Schools is gonna receive about $160,000 every year for three years. Twenty-five thousand of those every year is gonna be to support the Family Resource Center, this space. And the rest is gonna be directed to pay for two new positions that are gonna be housed at the Family Resource Center. The main position will be a project manager. That position, the responsibility of that position is to oversee the whole implementation of the Working Cities Challenge Initiative here in Lawrence, which actually, the name of the initiative in Lawrence is Lawrence Working Families Initiative. I'll be supervising that person. Then there is another position, which is a coaching specialist. That position is actually very innovative because it's, the idea is that we want to change the culture in the school system and in the city, and start not just focusing on the individual students, but in the whole family. The better the families are doing, when we talk about economically, health, socially, they're gonna be doing, the children's are gonna be doing better. So the idea is connecting students and their families to resources in different areas so that they actually have a better chance of succeeding in life, and also do better academically. So in short, that's actually what it is. And I don't know if you have questions about that specific initiative, but I wanted, before I close this part, I want to tell you, picture, because I'm a very visual person, okay? Picture a family that comes to the Family Resource Center, okay? And they're coming, and they're not just enrolling their student in the Lawrence Public Schools. What they are doing now is going through a process where we will be able to identify the health, childhood, social, and academic needs of the students, and hopefully connecting them to the right resources in the city. We're talking about 26 organizations right now, but the goal is to grow. So that, this part is closed. If you want to ask questions about this, and then I'll move to the family engagement piece.
Questions? Mr. Mariano?
Nelson, is there a component in this grant for family literacy?
Directly, no. But remember that we are working, as part of the Working Cities Challenge, is bringing all kinds of nonprofits to the table to provide workshops, and that may include that. Workshops and actually having people on-site to connect families with resources.
And where would those workshops be held? Would they be held in the schools, or would they be held...
Good question. We have a position in the Lawrence Public Schools, is the Punishers Specialist. You might already have met Raiza Carrasco-Valles. And one of the things that we are doing is trying to distinguish which resources belong in the schools and which ones belong at the Family Resource Center. Because we understand that not every family is gonna come to the resource center. We have neighborhood schools, and we should be trying to drive as many resources to the schools and make... schools, and make those available at the center if they need to. So, it will be a combination of both.
Mr. Blackford?
Thank you, Nelson. I just had a question about the grant itself. Is it renewable? And if not, what resources are you guys looking towards to continue the work of the resource center?
At this point, it's no renewable, but the organizations that are involved in this initiative are committed to continuing this opportunity. And I will tell you that 700,000 among 27 organizations is not a lot. So, most of them actually, without even winning the grant, had already committed to continue to work with the Lawrence Public Schools.
Excellent. Thank you.
I just want to say, I think Nelson's being a little bit modest when he said they, it was the first prize statewide, and we beat out places like Salem and Springfield, let me say Salem and Holyoke, and Pittsburgh, all that had strong applications. But I'm also a visual person, too. When I think about that place where a single mom and her kid come down from Park Street to the, to the, to the center and signs her kids up for school, and then also gets told, hey, by the way, if you get your GD, or if you already have your high school diploma, you can sign up for community college right down the street. So, we're really excited to have this because as we try to figure out our workforce development, to try to make people want to bring their businesses here, we want them to know that we have this great workforce of 60,000 people who live in the city, who can participate in, who through this process can get workforce development, training, get connected to other resources to make their, make them more employable. So, I'm really excited about having this, and I don't think they have a better person in the staff. And between you and Raisa, I think you guys are going to knock this down.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I just want to congratulate you and everybody that is involved in this initiative. I think, I really believe this is going to be a big and very important towards the city and towards the school. This is great. I believe this is something that is going to make a difference.
Thank you.
Ms. Ortiz?
Just real quick. Is May 2nd event that's happening at the high school part of that initiative?
May 2nd or May 10th?
Is it the 10th? Oh, May 10th.
This Saturday?
Yeah, this, isn't it this Saturday?
Yes, we're having a school, I mean kindergarten and first grade registration, is that what you are referring to?
No, the high school.
The Mother's Day on the 18th?
The 18th? No, that's not part of, no.
Is that something completely different?
That's different. You're talking probably about the Mother's Day celebration that is being organized by...
No, I'm talking about the high school.
Lawrence High School Community Forum.
Lawrence High School Community Forum.
Parents, student, alumni, and Lawrence business, please join us for a community forum to reflect on the values and mission of Lawrence High School. That's what I have.
Different organization.
I think it's different.
We'll have Mr. Fialo get you the information.
I would be more than happy to find information for you. I would premind, this is actually a good segue to community and family engagement.
There you go.
And if you don't have any more, I think you had another question.
I have one more question. Have we determined where the Family Resource Center will be as yet? Do you have it?
The bids have come in, and I think we're studying the possible sites at this point.
Okay.
So, when it comes to the Lawrence Public Schools, as you understand, there is, the new model that the Public Schools is using is called open architecture, which means it is a decentralized approach to, you know, education and also management. And what I would say is that with schools having the opportunity to choose the ways that they want to engage families, it gives an opportunity to sort of be creative and allow, how you call it, initiative and innovation. At the same time, is, schools might not be communicating everything to the, to the center, to the Family Resource Center, or to my department. That's something that we can work with, that's one of the challenges that we have right now, but it's not a bad challenge. What that tells you, what you just mentioned, is that schools are taking the initiative to do a number of stuff. We are working to change that and have more ownership, more knowledge of what is happening in the, in the schools by having two, we have three positions, and I pray you already know Felipe, Maria Campusano, and Alfonso Garcia. These are three family engagement liaisons, and their role is to help connect with the schools to support the family engagement practices. Right now, the main efforts that we have is trying to understand what is available in the Lawrence Public Schools, at the individual schools. We have identified a number of schools that actually are doing an amazing job when it comes to family engagement, and there are some others that, you know, need a little bit of help. That doesn't mean that they are not doing anything. That means that there is always room for improvement. So, one example of a great school is the Legacy School. So, we are taking the best practices from that school and sharing that with all the schools. We just had a training this past week where we trained about 20 different partnerships and all the stuff from the, from different schools in terms of creating workshops, opportunities for families, and also they were trained as facilitators. That would be an example. I know Michael Fialo is also doing a great, is doing a great job creating an opportunity to reshape the vision of the Lawrence High School, which was last revisited in 2002, I believe. And now is, they are doing an activity or a series of forums to invite families who come in and staff to provide the input and feedback. I participated in one of those. So, how do we support that? By promoting it. And let me just make sure that I'm following, I don't want to get, lose my train of thought. So, something else that we are doing is building relationships with different nonprofits in the city to either create new partnerships or enhance some that are already in place. Raisa, our partnership specialist, has been very crucial at that. She had been meeting with a number of organizations and businesses, including Microsoft, Notre Excess Community College, and so on. If you want a complete list of those, we can get you those. But the idea is, how do we connect these partners, or potential partners, to schools to support the work that they are doing? Our goal actually is that family engagement is not something that is in the back burner, but something that is in the front burner, because research shows that actually if the, when parents are more involved, students are going to be doing better. And it's not just the job of the Family Resource Center or the Community Family and Student Engagement Department, it should be the role of everyone, but with our support.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Bhutan. I'll ask Mr. Malino from our Facilities Department to come up. Thank you for joining us, Mr. Malino.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
I think Mr. Malino felt left out of the last meeting, so we wanted to make sure that he got on with us tonight.
Mr. Superintendent, I just want to, his mother must be very proud.
I think so.
Is she here? Look at that shade of red.
So, I just wanted to alert the school committee to an issue which we see coming down the road regarding at the Bruce School. As you, many of you know, we have installed trailers at the Bruce School to house some of our children to deal with the overflow. These trailers are very old and outdated, and I, although they are safe, I'm not sure they are going to meet inspection or allow us to get an occupancy permit next year. As such, it is likely that I am going to take down those trailers. To do that and bring the kids back inside the school, I'm going to have to take the Bruce School, which was a 3 to 8 school, and take the second grade and move, excuse me, was a 2 to 8 school, take the second grade and move them to the Hennessy, and make the Bruce a 3 to 8 school instead. At the same time, we might have to add a few more kindergarten sections in the Tower Hill area to accommodate that. So, it's not a huge district-wide restructuring, but there will be some parents impacted. There will be a few schools that will be impacted, but I think at the end of the day, the safety of our students has to be our number-one priority. I don't know if Mr. Malino wants to talk about the history of the trailers or the kind of shape they're in now.
Trailers are approximately 25 years old. We've owned them for approximately 12 years. Back, 12 years ago, we purchased them, they were used trailers. They're considered double-wide trailers, so they're split in the middle when you take them apart. They've pretty much outlasted their lifespan. They're a wood structure, flat roof, so it's time like the superintendent said to make a move.
Any questions? Mr. Blackford?
The Hennessy currently is pre-K through...
One.
Through one?
Yeah.
Okay, so what, the only difference is the kids would be going to the Bruce and the second grade are staying there now?
The second grade would stay, and that would allow the Hennessy to actually get more enrichment activities, more specialty teachers and things like that, but it will probably displace some of our kindergarten classrooms out, so we may have to rent temporarily in that area, either Our Lady of Good Counsel or somewhere else, to be able to accommodate this shift.
What other, does it impact any other schools in the sense of forcing kids to go like that around the line?
It doesn't at this time. It is a smaller restructuring, I mean, but I just, I don't see us, I think we could probably get another year or two out of these trailers, but I don't think it's in the best interest of the students or the families to take a chance, and I think the move is to do it now over the summer when we have time to really do it thoughtfully and execute it well.
And how does this impact teachers in the sense that they'll just be transferring over under Hennessy leadership?
So, it's interesting. I think there'll actually be very little movement, so teachers, if they want to stay, for the most part, this doesn't hold true for everyone, but I think over 90% of the teachers, that if they wanted to stay at the Hennessy, they can. I think the second-grade teachers are going to be asked to move down from the Bruce to the Hennessy as a team.
Just one final question. Currently, the Hennessy is a feeder school to the Gilmat and the Bruce?
That's correct.
Correct. So, how does that breakdown work? Is it just purely by geographics where the kids go?
Yeah, so that area feeds into both of those schools, and you should expect more information from us coming forward about how we're going to split it up so that we make a fluid transition, so that this section goes with the Bruce, this section, you know, so it goes to the relevant schools.
Thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, are we going to provide more transportation in that area regarding the students that are going to be moving from one place to another, or...
So, we're going to have to look at it. There may be a need to transport students. My hope is that we'll be able to find space in that neighborhood, so it won't be, it'll still be kind of a walk-zone situation. We believe there is space inside that neighborhood, so parents won't be terribly impacted, but it's something we will definitely look at if need be.
Ms. Mariano?
Chris, I have a question. What year was the Bruce built, approximately?
I would say in the 1950s, approximately.
Just, just a little bit of thinking down the road. That is one of the densest populated areas in the city. Would we be looking at some new construction at this time to alleviate some of that burden?
We're undergoing a capital assessment as we speak. We hope to have something for the school committee early in the fall to discuss the population trends and what we're seeing. As many of you know, I think when I first came, there were just over 12,000 students. We are now approaching the 14,000-student number, and we are growing by leaps and bounds. So, I think we're going to have to make some strategic decisions. With that said, there's a timeframe and a process that takes place with the Mass School Building Authority, where these things don't happen necessarily overnight. So, we've been working on that now. We hope to have a good capital improvement plan and a facilities plan with what our needs are going forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Blackford?
Quickly, do you have the numbers on capacity for the Hennessy School and what it's going to change by? Is it like...
We can get you all that stuff via email. I don't have them with me now, but we can certainly get you all of that information.
Thank you.
I would also say that at this time, I'm asking the mayor and the school committee, just advising you that we're not going to need the General Donovan School. That is not going to be a building that we're going to need for next year. We cannot rule out in the future the possibility, given the growing enrollment, that we may need it, but for next year, that is not a building or an area that we need the extra space.
Thank you.
One final question.
Mr. Blackford?
I apologize. Can we get a breakdown of where the population growth is majority-wise when it comes to impacting individual schools?
We're going to get you all the information we have. I'm not sure it's going to be as exact as either you or I would like, but we can certainly give you some kind of trend data to show you what's happening and where the numbers are really popping up.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Ortiz?
So, when will parents be notified as to...
You should expect parents will be notified before the end of this month that this is taking place. We've had preliminary conversations with teachers about the possibility. We wanted to make sure that we had all our ducks in a row before we made this move, but a final decision will be made probably sometime early next week, and parents will be notified before June of any changes.
So, then with that notification, will we then know in the next two weeks that what building people are going to, meaning...
We should have some indications about what we're going to be...
That additional building?
Able to offer for August or September, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. We've had a situation like this before. If you guys remember at Phoenix, where we had to rent a space, kind of a sole-source space up there at Our Lady of Good Counsel. And so, I think, you know, we're going to be able to provide a much deeper direction for parents before the school year ends, which I think is really important for parents, so they have the summer to prepare. There's no late surprises in late August or September that there's a problem. We're trying to get out ahead of this quickly, and there may be some that say where we could get another year out of these trailers. I just don't feel in good conscience that I can do that, and so we're trying to be as proactive as possible at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malino. We'll have you back for the next session.
Almost, sir. Video's in production.
One last thing before I take, turn it over to the chairman for discussion. We do have eighth-grade final assemblies coming up. I believe there was either a sheet in your packet, or Joan is going to work with you with them. There's a sheet in your packet. If folks would like to sign up for some of those, you can work with Joan either after the meeting today or via email in the coming days. It's always great to have school committee presence at some of these eighth-grade moving-up ceremonies. With that said, I'd like to turn the discussion over to the chair, recognizing that this group had some requests for information. Folks wanted to talk about the idea of public participation and front-loading that at the beginning of the meeting. There were some follow-up items that were asked for by this committee, which I believe are in your packets, including the assemblies, some out-of-district data. We'll ask Dr. Bergeron to come up, she's here, to answer any questions you might have about that. We're also going to hand you, if you haven't been handed it already, information fresh off the press on the teacher leadership opportunities in the district and what that looks like. We recognize that we're giving you this today, so we're going to put it on the agenda for June to give you a time to process all of that and then come back with questions then. Additionally, I sent an email out. The budget book should be available next week. We're trying to over-communicate with school committee, and we're going to be adding additional individual meetings for school committee members to come in and talk, and either one or two school committee members with our budget folks to answer any specific questions you have, and then also to give you a chance to ask additional questions in June at our early, at our next school committee member meeting, so that you have an opportunity to really thoroughly explore the budget and make sure you're comfortable with what's happening. With that said, Mr. Mayor, the discussion is yours to lead.
Thank you. On the matter of public participation, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Blackford?
I, this is just a, I guess, a courtesy thing to those speaking before us, especially those who have somewhere else they need to be and they want to bring a point to us, and then they can go on their way, or if they did want to stay, they could. But I think it's just out of courtesy to the people coming to speak before us, I think it would be good to have them be able to speak prior to us meeting, and if there are any issues that can come up, we can discuss them as well.
Anyone else? If you'd like, we can motion to that effect.
Motion to move public participation at the beginning of the meeting.
Second?
I was remaining second. Just another piece of discussion. I think that once we take the vote, I think we'll hand it over to the superintendent, see what we can get done with that. done with that, and see if we can get that accommodated. Anybody else want to talk about it? All those in favor?
Aye.
You guys have it. On matter of follow-up items, the packets, I think we have here is the school choice and charter school student enrollment tuition, paid from Lawrence. I think this is the matter that we'd have for Mrs. Bergeron. Come up and help us through some of these numbers.
Good evening. We would ask for some data, so what we decided to give you was four years, so you could get a historical perspective on how many students have been in school choice, so you can see those numbers are dropping over the last few years. We started with 68.7, point seven because students don't stay a full year, so that's why you get that percentage point, and we're down to only 45 students currently participating in choice, and most of those students are in the high school grade structure at this point in time. And then that is the assessment to the district, to the city, in terms of what the cost is for the choice students and what the average then per pupil is, so that you can kind of see how that plays out across, and that's as of the December data from the state. In charter school students, you can see we've had an increase in charter enrollment, because we actually have three additional chatters that have opened in the community in the last couple of years, and although that enrollment is going up, our enrollment is not going down, so they are not impacting our enrollment in any way, shape, or form. And then that is their per pupil allocation from the budget from the city in terms of what the average per pupil would cost, and that's as of their March data currently. So, to give you a comparison for our enrollment, so you could get a sense of how we are faring and what our per pupil is, we made it equitable. We took out transportation and adult ed, because they're not really student cost, and you can see our enrollment from 2010, '11 was 12.7. Right now, we're at 13.7 as of our January 1 data. We're actually a little higher than that currently, so our overall student cost is about $10,378, which is a little less than what a charter school is averaging. But then, when you start looking at those a little more closely, we gave you our out-of-district students and what those look like, so you can see that an out-of-district student at 137 of those, they're actually costing averaging $47,000 per student. So, when you kind of take those, that population out of our enrollment, our actual per pupil allocation for the Lawrence Public Schools is not as high as one would think when you just took our overall budget. We wanted to give you a comparison also, because of our School for Exceptional Studies, it would be comparable to an out-of-district school, but it's in place in district school, and their average cost for their students at this point is $39,000. So, the average out-of-district cost is 47. We're paying $39,000 to educate students that were able to keep in the district, so it really is a cost savings to the district. And then if you just wrap it all up in terms of every cost that's associated with the Lawrence Public Schools, including in-district, out-of-district, but without the adult ed, that's what our average per pupil would be overall. So, that's kind of a rundown of that data for you, and then the other page was people wanted to know the types of out-of-districts where students were going, so we gave you the schools that were currently utilizing, the FTE of students currently enrolled, and what the average tuition would be based on that enrollment. So, you can see they're very variable, depending on the school placement and the needs of the students. They can range from the low numbers being in the, you know, 40, 30, 31 to 40 range, with our high-end students being up in the $200,000 a year range, based on their individual needs.
And on this chart here, FTEs, full-time enrollment?
Full-time equivalency, so it would be, some of those, you can see a student might be .25, so it was likely a student that started the year but then aged out at 22. So, after 22, they move out of the public school setting and go into one of the other adult service agencies.
And what is CREST CAS?
CREST is the, our current, our alternative, our regional alternative. It used to be the Greater Lawrence Educational Collaborative.
Yeah.
They've changed their name, and I'm not going to remember what they, their term stands for now.
What do they provide?
Kind of a little cross-stance one.
So, they have 7.2 students there?
They provide, they have alternative programming for students who are in need of that. They have a very substantial program for multiply handicapped students and a very heavy population of autistic students, and a large-scale program for the 18 to 20-year-old students who really need extensive vocational training.
So, some of these are students that have individual education plans?
These all have, all of the SOG students are students on educational plans.
Any questions? Underneath the sheets? Mr. Blackford?
Thank you, Ms. Bergeron, for compiling this for us. I, a couple of questions. Lighthouse School, Merrimack Educational Collaborative, and St. Anne's Homes.
Mm-hmm.
Someone trying to call me. What is that? Can, are those, how far are those in the sense of transportation-wise?
Lighthouse is in Chelmsford. St. Anne's is right in Methuen, and what was the third one you asked?
Merrimack Education.
Merrimack Education Collaborative. They have placements in Bilricka, Tewksbury, and there's one more, I think in Bedford currently.
The reason I ask is, are, do we consolidate transportation for those kids? Like, do they all take one bus, or are they individually transported?
As much as possible. The bus runs are looped, so that they're, we're trying to hit more than one school at the same time. Now, there are certain students that, on their IEP, cannot ride with more than X number of students. Our need monitors are on the bus, so Mr. Clement's very good about making sure he gets as many students as possible in one run to try and consolidate our costs.
Gotcha. Thank you. I also had a question on charter school reimbursement. The state is supposed to reimburse, how, what is the reimbursement rate currently, and what is it supposed to be?
The state does a reimbursement to the city in terms of its assessment for charter. It starts out at, they're supposed to reimburse, starting at 100, down to 75 to 50, 25% after the fifth year you own the charter at this point in time. I think at this point, they hadn't quite gotten to the full 100%, and they've been hitting 75, 50, and the 25%.
And are there, which ones are closer to the 25%? So, where are we when it comes to the charters?
It's by years that they've been in service. So, our newer chatters, the three new community days, should be at the closer to the 75%, whereas the Family Development and the original Community Day would be past their 25, even 25. They'd be down to 0.
Gotcha.
Just as a follow-up piece of information, that the state never fully funded the reimbursement.
That's correct.
So, even if they go through that process, and they still debate this on Beacon Hill, that's the need to have that, even that, that first set of dollars put back in. I think the district has been harmed by that. We've been fortunate compared to some of the other communities. They have the, they have smaller student populations, so the impact is greater. Like you said, the enrollment doesn't impact us, because we have...
We have so many.
Down, but the other communities have a harder time with it.
I think you're going to see this be a larger and larger issue with districts, particularly in these economic times, who aren't getting the funding that, you know, they're due.
So, we have projected growth for, what's our projected growth for next year for us? And then do we have a projected growth for the charters? Because I know they're expanding their services as well.
Our projected enrollment is supposed to be, we assume it will be somewhere around 13,950. Might hit the 14,000 mark. We're not, we're kind of tentative there. The enrollment of the charters, they will be adding one grade level in three of the schools, and that's about 60 students per grade, so that should be about 180 additionals in the charters.
And I know, I know this is being debated many, many locations at this point. Could you, Mr. Riley, could you give us a brief synopsis of what's happening currently with, I know, I know that there was a change in the model of how schools are rated for the bottom 30, bottom 10% of the district, or something like that. I know, I know it's in debate currently, but I know it was changed to, I think, it's 20% growth.
So, it has not been finalized. The commissioner has stepped back. The Charter School Association came to a DESE board meeting to protest any change in the formula. The formula was going to add additional points for growth. I would argue that growth is maybe the most important metric in a student's development, and how they're developing compared to their peers is a really important number. What happens, however, I guess, when, when you do that, it changes the dynamic of who the bottom 20% of school districts will be, and what happens is you start seeing some suburban schools go into that bottom 20%, and some urban schools come out of it, and I think the charter school folks have some concerns about that. They believe that they're more of an urban force and feel that maybe this will change the amount of seats that they have access to or school systems that they have access to. So, it's a, in some ways, I try to be Switzerland on this topic, but I will say that I believe deeply in the student growth percentile metric. You will recall this district improved after years of decline in ELA. We were up four points as a district, which is pretty substantial. In mathematics, we were up 17 points, and these are important gains that our children are making. And so, I think, for me, I always look first to the growth and then second to the absolute performance, and you're starting to see some other people also agree with that statement, but there is this group of folks that feel that absolute performance is the way to go.
If I could just touch briefly on, I mean, I, I've been contacted by a couple of parents on this, that they were concerned that this would affect Lawrence, when, how many charter schools we can have and things like that. Just so everyone knows, we have great growth in our city, I think the highest in the state. Even if it was 50/50, 50% growth compared to 50% overall achievement, I, our school would, our system would still unfortunately be in the bottom 20%.
20%, yeah.
So, there's going to be no change for us. It's more of a...
Yeah.
What happens to Boston Public Schools or Lowell Public Schools, whether or not, what percentage they use, but I think it's, I think it's something that's worth watching at least for, especially how we're moving with growth and overall achievement. I think that five years down the road, 10 years down the road, it could affect us, but I think that it's, it's an interesting topic that I think all of you should take a look at sometime.
Cool.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mrs. Mariano?
Sorry. Mary Lou, can you tell me a little bit about school choice? Now, do we still opt to participate in school choice, and do we have the option to pull out of it?
It's an annual, it's an annual vote that the school committee has always taken, or we brought forward and just told you what our decision is. We have nev, we do not participate. We do not accept students in as choice students because of seating capacity. We don't have the available seats to do that. We don't have a choice whether our parents choose to opt to go to a district that is open for school choice.
All right. Now, I don't know whether you can answer this or not. Do you know what some of the reasons are that parents would choose, like, to go outside of this district? Especially, you're saying that most of them are high school students. With the facility that we have and what we're offering our kids, I have to wonder why parents are opting to move out of the district and not taking advantage of what we have here.
The 45 that are currently out, most of these students have been out for multiple years. They went out when they were in the lower grades, so they went out when they were in first, second grade, and they've just continued school choice in the district they had chosen to go to. Parents go for many reasons. Sometimes it's because they're taking you to the district where they're currently working. It's a convenience. Others left because things in the district at that time were tenuous, and they weren't sure that the education the child was going to get here was what they thought, they wanted their child to have. But most of these students have been out multiple years and not just recently going out at high school level.
And when you look at the numbers, what you see is the trend is, in 2010, we had almost 70 students opt out of the district, and now we're down to only 45.
No, I know it's come way down. Do we have any conversations with these families year to year to see if they want to come back?
It's not our choice to have a conversation with a parent.
Okay.
That's truly theirs. We were at a high at one time, about 385 kids had gone to school choice, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I will say on that piece, I think that as we grow the profile of the high school as a place that more excellence is seen across the state, I think that will help, because we cannot deny that. Being under receivership by the state gives it a cloud to some extent, and also, you know, past performance. And, you know, when people go to that, to those magazines that show the school districts in order, they're making choices about renting at one place versus owning another, so while I don't take it personally, and I don't think we should, because I think we're doing excellent things, it's a very personal matter, and I'm actually pretty excited about the trend. 45 is, as a percentage of the total kids in the system is amazing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Blackford?
When it comes to school choice, I see that the per pupil cost, purely looking at it financially, it's $4,000 less to educate a child to send them somewhere else. I don't want to do that. Let me make that clear. But what, when we had a much higher cost, did that benefit us? And what, what are the benefits of keeping a kid in Lawrence Public Schools as opposed to sending him somewhere?
The school choice number is actually, that district gets that money that would have come to us, so that $6,000 would have been ours if that student were with us. What goes to the district is the difference between what our per pupil would be and what that district's per pupil would be.
Okay.
So, that's how they make up the difference of what the tuition that goes out.
And when, when we, because I know, I have a couple of friends on the Greater Lawrence Technical School Committee. It's much more complicated the way they, because the city has to pay them, and then they have to pay someone else, and it's much worse. When it comes to school choice going to Whittier as opposed to the Volk, but for us, how does the process work? Do we just pay them directly from our funds?
The money never comes to us.
Oh, it just goes straight to them?
The state takes it right off the top and sends it to the district where those children are enrolled.
Great. Thank you.
Any other further questions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative. Just a question about the schedule. We are, this is our last meeting before? We have one more?
We have a meeting in June.
In June, but this is the last off-site one. We're going to go back, in June, we're going back to the district.
I believe that's my understanding, what this committee wants.
Then, once, then we have one in July?
No, we usually take July and August off, and then we're back for September.
And September will be back at the central office?
I, you know, I'll leave that to you, Mr. Chairman. I think it might be a call to order to talk with the school committee about what they want to do.
Okay.
I am agnostic when it comes to this. I would say that I do like coming out to the schools and seeing the kids in their element, so.
Yeah, it's fun.
I'm flexible.
Great. So, we'll be back at the central office for the next meeting.
Could I also say that I, we may have to move that meeting up, depending on what happens on the city side and when you guys are going to do a final budget. I want to make sure the school committee has time to ask questions and have everything. Usually it's not till the end of June when the thing is finalized, but I want to make sure, just reserving the option that we may have to move the meeting up by a week or so, trying to get folks head, lead time.
We're, we're going to send the, my office is going to send the budget down to the city council on May 15.
Okay.
And I think the first time they take it up will be that following week. So, we anticipate that the budget will be done before July 1. And you need the meeting to happen before or after the budget is passed?
I just think it would be, it would be helpful to have this committee have an opportunity to ask final questions before everything gets submitted and by you guys. So, we can work on it. Usually I get a letter at this time telling me when the schools are going to be up, but, you know, we can talk about it offline and let everyone know if we need to move the meeting up.
Yeah. There's a new chair of the Budget and Finance Committee. The old chair left.
I see.
So.
Where do you go?
I'm not sure how that's going to work.
Hard to replace that old chair.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Blackford?
I assume the budget will be put online as soon as we get it as well.
Yes.
Prior to, previous years. So, my question, Mr. Mayor, the, aside from the budget for the meetings, for September, I would suggest that we meet in central office again, just so, because I don't know if the schools will be prepared by that time to really have anything for us, and then back in October out to the schools.
That works. Great. That's true. When did you say the budget books will be ready?
By the latest, next Friday, the 16th.
Yeah, May 16th is what they emailed, so.
Great. Anything further? Mr. Superintendent?
No, I'm good. I think we'll move to, with your permission, public participation?
Public participation.
Mr. Mali, are you here?
Yes. Good evening, honorable member of Lawrence Public School Committee. End of the academic year, we as the parent and citizen proud to bring to your attention that our hard-working teachers and their union have a contract. Lawrence Public School is moving forward with the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Riley. Our public school has... with the best leadership of Honorable Superintendent Riley. Our public school has more Level 1 schools now, more high school graduate, more MCAS improvement. Our public school are becoming the best public school in the nation, but our task as a citizen of this city is not over. We as a parent support teachers such as Mr. Mendez, great father, great community leader, and the best teacher from Lawrence Public School. We support and we demand of you as our elected official from District A to District F, support our teachers and their great union. Our teachers has been important reason to success of the turnaround plan. Lawrence Public School is moving forward with the greatest leadership and best teachers and union. Citizen or parent had not done until we, we as a community, as a, as a parent, come together in support of our teachers for the best turnaround plan and best success of our children and our public school. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a little hard to read. I think Mr. Melday or Ms. Wellday from Andover Street? Are you here? Anyone else sign up? Perhaps accidentally? Okay, I guess that's it for the evening. At this time, we'd like to close the school committee meeting, and we will see you next month. Thank you all.